Yes, next, if you would please. Would you give a call in order and confirm for. Mayor Baggett, Chris, Mayor President Fattman?
President.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
And Mr. Razzell?
Here.
Mr. Shealy?
Here.
Robert Davis?
Here.
And then Mr. Ware?
Here.
Yes, we have a call. I love the whole title. Uh, you would stand with me, please. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, could you offer our invitation and Dr. Fattman, please let us in our pledge?
Hey, Mr. Fattman, thank you so very much for bringing us here today. Please be with those that are going through trials and need your help. Thank you so much for all the time given us in Christ's whole righteous name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, I should probably know this by now, but I don't. Um, public comments. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero-zero-seven, members of the public may speak on an agenda item during the public comm- public communication section of the meeting or at any time the agenda item is called for a discussion by the mayor. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak. A speaker needing a translator and more interpreter may be given six minutes to speak. Members of the public wishing to address the council on non-agenda items may do so pursuant to the same time constraints as agenda items. The council will not comment on items not on the agenda. However, the council may refer the item to city staff for research, resolution, or referral of the matter to the council as a future agenda item. Hmm, Ms. Gonzalez? Yes? Come here. Coming with your ring?
Mayor?
What?
Oh, yeah, good. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for your volunteer services to our community. I was gonna talk to you tonight about the December twenty-fourth minutes that they were listed last month, and I was gonna ask them to amend them to accurately reflect what happened during that meeting. But I'm sitting there being on my job.
Thank you. Um, okay, items of community interest. Um, school started last week. Um, I guess it's been a fairly quiet week, I'm not certain, but, um, let's see, what else do we have coming up? Um, Wednesday night meeting is tomorrow. Uh, we had a really good, uh, school teachers lunch, that was great. Uh, next week, we have, um, starting football, the football classic in Glade Water. And then one thing that's coming up in September, on September the seventh at four o'clock in the afternoon, we'll be having our honor our heroes event. Uh, at the civic center, starts at four. It may run a little longer than an hour this time because we have a guest speaker. Uh, Sheriff, Smith County Sheriff Larry Smith is going to be our guest speaker. Speaker, at the time of nine eleven, uh, the sheriff was with ATF, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. He was actually on vacation, working on his new house when his paper blew up. And he had to drive from Tyler to DC, and he was boot sung around at the Pentagon, working recovery. So he, he knows of what he speaks. Uh, so that's going to be a really, I think, a really nice thing. If you know veterans, are active military, please invite them, we want to honor them. Uh, we'll honor our law enforcement and our first responders. Hi, first responders. And, uh, we want to really make this special. It's our twenty-third year doing this. Uh, Sonya Harson started this in two thousand and two. And we want to continue it, not only because it's just the right thing to do, but to honor Sonya too. So if you do know veterans, active military, please invite them to come. Um, okay, let's see. And everything else is going to be on calendar, I understand? Uh, volunteer fire department monthly report. And I have something for y'all. I went to, uh, uh, cert training, and I snagged a few extra. Excuse me, that's the alarm.
Were you guys off last night?
Yes, all cell phones off, please.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure why it's decreasing calls, but I guess no complaint about that. I mean, our citizens were safer and more taken care of, so that's great. Any questions about the report?
No question, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for your work. Just a second. ESD, um, we're getting close to that, uh, transfer for dispatch stuff that we met with, uh, the sheriff about. So that'll go live on September thirtieth at PM, dispatch will switch over. Um, so we're anticipating that change and working with our crew to be ready for that. Um, then also some programming, uh, issue with a couple of radios that we got. Uh, so I just got in the software and able to tweak those settings, try to get that number there. Uh, automatically, it's been performing well, besides this couple of, uh, fluke issues. Uh, fingers aren't still attached, that's cool. I can bend hardly, uh, so been doing therapy on that, and still a little bit of road ahead of us, but we're on track.
You'll sign your name, do you?
With my hand.
Well, that's impressive, Brandon. And I was saying, since we've not had any, um, discussion on it, we're still okay as far as, um, you know, burn ban or anything like that?
Yeah, I've been monitoring all that, not under any commission or under a burn ban right now, though I'm sure it's right around the corner as conditions are.
Getting close.
Is it raining?
Yeah.
When?
Next week.
So it's raining, Mark, forty, fifty percent.
Yeah, it's supposed to get better every week, every day. Of course, I've been watching TV.
I don't watch TV, I see a salary, my ticket's in the head, I should.
Okay. Um, I'll let Samuel fill in the blank here in just a minute, but we do have back on there another medical bill for him. And, uh, this is for, uh, Ortho, Lums, uh, PDL, LCM. I'm gonna let Samuel explain just a little bit, right now, he's making code hands when he goes to first therapy. And this apparently is the document, and the, um, therapy, all billed through the same agency. So right now, the balance is three thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars. And we, this, of course, is under our authority. Uh, we did authorize the payment to Texas Fire Joint at our last meeting, our budget meeting. And so we're asking if it'd be twenty-one hundred and fifty.
And it's how much?
Three thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. It may be more.
So there's, yeah, it's a little confusing to me, I'm still waiting on a call back from their financial department. Um, the therapy, I pay him for each visit, that's ninety dollars a visit. And, um, but sometimes when I pay that at the visit, I'll get a message saying, hey, your bill is updated. I'll look at that, and it's got that ninety dollar in the charge, but not the credit to it yet. So I'll have to call them, and they'll tell their accounting, hey, that ninety dollars you paid goes to that bill. So it's kind of a fluid number, but yeah, it's roughly, I don't know, uh, which is the surgeon's. The bill we did last time was the oper- the facility expense and supplies.
I see how fast they can put the charge on there. Pay them the same amount, they put the charge on.
Yeah, see, I know, when you give the ninety, is that supposed to be the total cost, or is that just the?
That's the total cost of a therapy visit, for what they're charging. Now, I did, when you had pretalked me about the discrepancy there, I pulled up that account, looked at every line item, and there are some times when they're charging, the bill says one-twenty for therapy, but they told me it would only be ninety, so I asked the, um, receptionist there. He said, no, it's only supposed to be ninety, I'm not sure why, but the building department is saying it's one-twenty, but I'll get that revenue.
Are you having therapy under insurance, or all cash pay?
It's all cash.
That's why it's ninety-nine dollars. At insurance, it's one-twenty, because your cash pay, it's not. They give you ca- they give you discounts for the cash.
So maybe you go back in, and there's two bills on there that are wrong for therapy, for sure.
So if you guys.
Crazy, though, the bill has all kinds of numbers on it.
It does.
But it doesn't add down, but that's because maybe the insurance is covering it, maybe? I mean, there's a five thousand dollar line item there, but yet we only owe three thousand dollars, so that's kind of weird.
Yeah, we want that destiny.
Because you're cash paid.
Really?
Like a firefighter surgery, under insurance, it's thirty grand, cash pay is six.
Well, if you guys look at the bill, um, the very first one is Samuel's first visit for two thirty-five, we know he has that. Then the next one is the surgery charge, which is, um, oh wait, actually, the next one's one evening, we know he has that. Then the next one is the surgery charge, um, a net of eight hundred and fifty-four. And then there's a second charge that is the balance accurate, which is one thousand, twenty-three.
Well, because, yeah, so maybe there's some kind of a payment or adjustment, minus three, thirty-two hundred.
Beyond those, I do think you're gonna work with them, I'm not sure if the charges are correct after that, when it starts with the therapy part. But still, we know at least twenty-five hundred dollars is legitimate in charge, but it's one, one evening.
So we're looking at three thousand, three seventy-five to approve, right?
Three thousand, three seventy-three is.
Three seventy-three.
But it's possible some of that will go in, if they induce, if they're right.
But, but is this, this is gonna continue to grow, though, as it keeps going?
For follow-up.
Potential.
Yeah, for follow-up, having to blow, I can't actually, I mean, uh.
I just had one, uh, Monday, Monday we were going, uh, which should be shown on there soon, I would expect. Um, and then the next one is scheduled for two months, so that.
So they're asking it to be paid now, even though it's still ongoing? And it sounds like the balance isn't right, so maybe you should follow them and say.
The holidays are going up, they didn't.
They want you to pay it now before they send it to collect.
They're very, very fast, same slide.
Okay, my point was, if this three thousand is really the balance before cash pay. And we don't want to pay them.
We know that at least three thousand of it will be legitimate, the three seventy-five.
Okay.
And we're gonna have two more charges, probably, because you're gonna go two more times. One coming up, and then one two months later.
Okay, so we're paying through that?
Yes, we're only gonna pay the charges that we know for sure, which is through the, uh, surgery, and then the one follow-up appointment, we had a medium enter surgery, looks like those are correct, so we're gonna pay those, and then he's gonna work with them, and then they should.
So then I'll make a motion to approve up to three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, pay forward this dollar to future ones coming up, and see if that hopefully I'll cover it.
Okay.
Once he makes the adjustments, or gets some kind of magic.
Three thousand, three seventy-three?
Two, three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five, I just rounded it up to seventy-five.
Okay, done.
I mean, you're gonna, some of it might come off, and then some more might go on, so.
That's true.
Next time, we should maybe leave within.
Couple hundred that comes off.
Yeah, so we should be more than covered, up to, so the pro- the motion is up to three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second also? Okay, Mr. Bean, motion, uh, the motion that we pay up to three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And Ms. Allen, second, do we have any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Good to keep your name.
Um, okay, volunteer fire department, Texas Mutual Fireman's Insurance, quote.
So, did you print, you printed?
We, we got it on.
They have it in their packets, it's not printed, but they do have it in their packets.
Okay, the email order, or use.
Yes. The one you sent me, a July, this.
After all this, uh, late work with Sam's stuff going on, we hope that this will carry the future problems. I know Laura has a TML right now, talking with the representative prior to Texas Mutual, VFIIS, which is pretty much where all of the prior volunteer programs come from. And just a point, I know it's a lot more expensive than the TML is, but there's reasons, I'm sure he'd be coming here as insurance rep and explaining a lot of return rates as he sells it. Uh, a few of the key pointers of it is, uh, TML being a risk pool, where Texas Mutual, an actual insurance company mandated by the State of Texas Department of Insurance. And they're mandated to cover even presumptive cancer claims, which is a pretty high risk for our general duties. They also cover seventy percent of all of our, all of our claimants payroll. So I would have three different jobs paying three different payrolls all at the same time, too. So I'd gigs and main gig. They will take combined of all of those and pay seventy percent. I know TML pays, but he said seventy percent up to, I don't know if they did it on, or all three of it. We have to, we'll get real clear stuff with the TML, just know this, I know they'll cover all three jobs up to seventy percent payroll. Uh, if there's a line of duty to have on one of our members, their benefactor, will receive a nine hundred dollars cap per week for the rest of their life, uh, through this program. It's also reimbursable to the HB twenty-six oh four four street grant, which is what I already got to cover the TML on. So it'd be covered under that same grant, if you're aware of those terms.
Jeff, is it, if we do this, is it a hundred percent reimbursable? If we go up to?
It's not one hundred percent, because it's more than what the HB twenty-six oh four grant will cover.
Okay.
The, the grant will cover up the two, two hundred and twenty dollars per member.
Okay.
That's training, training, new, or certified. All of ours aren't completely certified. So it, it doesn't pay as much as the, the policy costs.
And there's no limitation on how many, how many volunteer firemen we have?
I've, I haven't worked a quota on twenty members, because that's about where our roster has been capping over the last couple of years.
Why, so we pick up more members over there?
We can pick up more members and have, this is a yearly thing with them.
So the price is not gonna change, he's just, I mean, that's the math.
Well, it'd go up per, per person, yeah, because they base on twenty-five dollar, this is, it's two policies, that's.
Right.
It's an add-on sickness and death policy with workers' comp policies, both. And it's capped at twenty members, what he quoted on, it'll go up a little bit, like we went up to twenty-five members or something like this.
So do you have to tell them who, who the members are, you're getting twenty-five names?
Yes, we'd have to give them the names, information on it. It would be the same thing they would do for TML.
So what are the chances, we, we need to have more guys?
If you can find them, we'll take them.
Right now, I think we're sitting at our officers are fifteen active.
Yeah, right, so you're, you're covering for some more new, on this automatic.
Yeah, we've got fifteen members with one single.
And this, and this is good for twenty guys, right?
So most of these insurances will be like, will say, this is our minimum price.
Right.
And it's good for up to this.
Twenty guys.
So like.
So we got fifteen, we add four more, we're still good with this price.
As long as it's, so a lot of these are, you start at, most of them, their minimum is thirty. So this is the price, minimum thirty, hope you don't have thirty, too bad, that's the minimum price. So you're covered up to that point, and we know that at one, you pay additional, but it's actually cheaper than what it would be per member once you get over it, the prices start.
So, and, and if we were to do this, who takes the responsibility and monitor, and make sure that we get the right guys on the list, and whether people need to be added, it takes care of, so we have, God forbid, any complaints again. We're not gonna get, get caught with our pants down, because we forgot what somebody's name was.
These, these policies, the guy who's talking to our rep, that assured me that this will cover us. If we get a page out, we stand up, the round don't have water there, we're covered. If we're mowing our lawn, we hear the radio stop, and get our foot covered, we're covered. That's the coverage.
Right.
We're building fireworks, please, we're so.
Losses for the city, we got you.
I said, I look forward, but they, with the twenty-six oh four grant kicking in, it's not like more.
Yeah, wait, maybe like five hundred dollars somewhere here, I didn't do compare.
Probably five hundred to a thousand at twenty members, I mean, they're telling you that number, that's not a twenty, twenty, I'm trying, but. The, they also offer, when you're with them, you get into a health and safety grant of another five thousand per year between their companies, VFIIS, Texas Mutual, and four street, is health and safety grant that they offer every year. It applies, it gets stuff like gear, wash extractors to clean our gear, uh, exercise equipment. Help if you want to hire somebody, nutritionist or something, come in and help us, stuff like that, the grant, so. And then they also, which I don't know anything about, but he gives, he said that they give a dividend check every year, every summer, back to their members, which not the individual to us, but to the department as a whole.
Should be off.
If we have no claims or, you know, good relationship with whatever, the, the, the checks back. That's the, I don't count you. I like the coverage, but the extra perks helps too, for me, so. Make the coverage, we got the coverage, basically cancer stuff, a lot of the policies don't, don't cover. The line of duty gets stuff that sometimes does. I don't know if y'all would discuss it in meetings, or if you don't, if you need to, something's getting better, or worse, or.
Is, is the money in their pocket to pay for this, or in their fund?
Would you propose for next year?
Prediction.
The increase.
So, basically, if we.
So on fire department for the year, would they have to amend their budget because of the unexpected, unexpected revenue purchases that we made this summer? They have the money in the bank account, they can start rebuilding their food, but they also built it into their budget for next year, so.
And this wouldn't actually, evidently, y'all pre- you didn't have to, to look, look forward. This wouldn't take into effect until the beginning of August, October.
September thirtieth, yeah, I'd say on policy plan, that's.
That would be when this would.
So could you be double covered, though, Jeff, if this is something better?
I mean, I would have talked with him to see, I assumed I could store it early. I mean, I just didn't want to throw money in and win without, you know.
Yeah, what we paid for, yeah, what we paid for will go, we said January thirtieth, but if, if they would still cover both, I wouldn't worry about it, not for what we paid for the TML policy. If this is a lot better for y'all.
I, I, I said, whenever we started at the end of the TML, when we started in September, October, then the, the new grant, the KFIS, which is supporting, is up in November. So they're perfect time to fill it out, right behind that, and kind of get, also, definitely.
So Simon, would they'll actually get you access to more grant funds to use for, for our safety and nutrition and stuff?
Yep. And there's one other grant that he said he wasn't real aware of yet, but it's kind of the new one that they give out as well.
So I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the, uh, cost of fifty-two, fifty-seven for the, uh, coverage of, um, this, this, uh, workers' comp and accident illness policies for up to twenty people. With the bravado that the, uh, fire department falls through to fill out for their, uh, grant. They keep track of the employee that belongs to.
I don't know, just okay, I say volunteers.
Volunteers, well, yeah, that, yeah, how are you in word, you, you fix the wording for me. You know what I'm saying, I just wanna make sure that you know what twenty guys are covered. So if all of a sudden Jones shows up, and he's twenty-one, and you come back to us and say, hey, I need to add more money, so we don't get caught with all of a sudden somebody getting hurt, we don't got somebody coming.
Can I ask, if we make your motion on it, if you're referring to the in-network thirty-nine, forty-five as part of the?
Yeah, there's two different policies you talk about here, thirty-nine, fifty, thirteen oh seven.
That one's actually for in-network, the out-of-network would be forty-four, sixty-two, four, plus the thirteen oh seven.
Well, mine's, you know, they can say that. Jeff Jones.
Should have been in the same email, but it.
No, if you, if you put down here the workers' comp policies, thirty-nine, fifty, you move.
It's not thirty-nine?
No, it's forty.
It's forty-four, the in-network, one he sent first, he sent in and out of network, but then I told him, then feel like everybody needed to go to their specific doctors that wants to, then they have their own doctors.
Yeah, it's not five hundred dollars.
Yeah, so.
Their own, their own doctors.
Didn't want it to.
Okay, add the five hundred dollars, I'm looking to, uh, fifty-seven, fifty-seven.
Different sort of policy.
I think our rounding is, it might be ten dollars more, or not to know it, fifty cent more, whatever, but.
Okay, we have a motion?
Have a question.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is, this, uh, VFIS policy you guys are talking about appears to be much more robust than the TML policy for not a whole lot. That's what I'm hearing.
A little bit more.
It's about four thousand amount of money, but they can be reimbursed for months to back.
That's guaranteed. It's, it gets a better benefit to them.
Well, not, not that they'll come, it's a guaranteed grant.
Uh, is it a guaranteed grant?
As long as, as long as they fill it out, the paperwork turns into grant, that is one that is guaranteed.
That's what I'm thinking, you just gotta fill it out, so.
They filled it out, sent it in, and they're, they're going.
I filled it out, sent it in for the TML portion that she did this year.
And we did, we got the money.
They approved it.
So this is not gonna start till after the TML expires, when September thirtieth, then October first is when this one kicks in.
I can tell you tomorrow.
Well, I mean, you'll handle it whichever way, but when, what expires, this one kicks in, and.
But it just covers additional things of the workers' compensation policy with TML.
I'm asking if it's more robust, if it's gonna get covered, or get a bigger bank.
Hopefully, nobody has to use it.
Hopefully not. If they do, there should be any questions as to what's he done this, or was he doing that, or why was he doing it, doesn't matter.
Yeah, it, it covers, the, the biggest benefit that I saw, based on the paperwork that's in your packet, is that, um, this covers the firefighter, wherever he's at, whatever he's doing. TML, for obvious reasons, can only insure when they're doing city business. You know, there's more, so.
Just covers them even in the middle, yeah.
That's what you.
Well, the accident. We're providing them health.
Well, yeah, because Sam does that, that is how it's really.
I understand, but I'll reject this.
Health insurance.
The only one that covers outside of anywhere is just the accident insurance. That, but that's, the accident insurance is kind of like, act like, when you get hurt, you get x-ray, they send you a hundred and fifty dollar check, and they'll pay for the car accident.
It's just, it's more comprehensive, for sure, based on what.
It's not, it's not basic insurance, it gives you sick, or you, you know, part of it.
Well, whatever would be more comfortable, you said, who, I mean, explain this more.
Yeah, he could be here tonight, he had a, a position to be previous to.
I'll just, I was reminding you, you guys on, that's a lot of questions.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Bean to go with the, uh, four thousand, four sixty-two, plus thirteen oh seven, and for some strange reason, I didn't add correctly, it's fifty-seven, nineteen.
He can, he did up to fifty-seven, fifty-seven.
Oh, okay, up to fifty-seven, fifty-seven.
Yeah, whatever we need to go to, I mean, you want to change your number, I won't keep that.
Of course you want.
Hers was a little lower, we'll stick with that.
I, I just rounded.
I just added, I mean, that's about.
My abacus is not as good as your abacus.
Well, I started putting letters, man, I quit. Uh, now then, do we have a second? Second for Mr. Shealy. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next thing on the list is Summer McCartney is requesting a variance on our, an exception on our fireworks policy. Uh, we do this every year, and we're doing this early and not at the last minute this time.
Where's Summer? Where's she?
Uh, to allow fireworks. Give me a bad time over here on the road. Um, the following events, uh, the community pep rally, which is on Wednesday, October the eighth, homecoming, which is October the tenth, and then senior night is thirty-first of October. Yeah. Um, that's gonna be fun. And at the, at homecoming, I'm not sure exactly when they shoot fireworks off, but I'm hopeful that, you know, they do the homecoming queen before, before the game starts. And I'm going to be getting with, uh, Ms. Turner, Ms. Turner, am I right? And, uh, Uncle, and also Mr. Hendrix, band director. I've been, it's been requested that we have recognition from the nineteen seventy-five state championship football team. Been fifty years since we had a state championship. And, yeah, and I've had, um, some players ask if we would put together some kind of a halftime brief recognition, we're not giving them gold watches or anything, just say, hey, guys, you know, good job and get it three years in a row, so I'm hopeful they'll save a few fireworks for that. Uh, she is asking for approval, they will have fire department on hand.
I got a question.
Yes.
Who's gonna be setting them off? Samuel?
I'm sorry?
Summer gonna be like defuses?
No, Summer is not gonna like to use, they will have people know what they're doing, they do it every year.
Because if you, I would encourage staff to research something in Texas called a highway technical license.
So they, and I'm sure that they will get someone from the fire department to help them.
Yeah, so, yeah, some of the.
And they will have fire department people.
They'll pay all the medical.
Yeah, no, we're not.
Well, we set an insurance policy.
I still don't know if that policy will cover fireworks.
And if worst comes to worst, we'll give them sparklers.
Sparklers, good idea.
School district, we're just allowing them to shoot the bomb legally.
Giving a variance to them.
To our horses.
You think this is all gonna happen like before the game or halftime?
And I don't know, I personally don't like them crowning the queen before the game, I don't wander around, but not my call. Anyway, this is.
Because now you're gonna shoot them off in the stadium, and it's gonna be a stadium full of people, right?
Yeah, I mean, why not?
They do it, they do it, they don't want it on the far end, but normally.
They're very, they don't wear boy stuff up.
They're probably not gonna let them do that on the field at all, because it's astro-ter, they're not gonna.
Yeah.
So they'll have to probably be on the track or something. They're usually on that grass side where the fire, my rabbits are. Down there in the corner, but.
Yeah.
Ms. Beckett?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to worry about just a caveat that burn bans might be?
Oh, she knows that, okay, yes.
Someone being asked to.
I'm sorry?
So we're approving.
Approve variants for fireworks.
Just bring variants to fireworks, okay.
She doesn't have to be there to request.
Nah, I feel that's a form.
She's a volleyball.
But somebody's gonna make.
She's a volleyball. Do we have a motion to create this?
I move to.
I'll move to accept the variances that she is asking.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Shealy has motion to approve the variances, and Dr. Fontenot has seconded the motion, do we have any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. They will take all preventive measures because they don't want anything burned any more than we did. Okay. Mr. Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi there.
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up. How are you, sir?
Yes, ma'am, what you said.
I'm pretty good. What do we want here?
A sewer tap.
A sewer tap?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What's happening to your sewer?
I, I, I've never lived out, it was kind of high.
You should have water, you don't have any sewer.
I ain't got water yet, I got the water, living, but I ain't got the water on, so I ain't never lived out. So I pretty moved back home. Because I just picked. And I moved back home.
Home, it's.
I was getting old.
So he could have gotten the water tap, he never got a sewer tap. Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, so he could have gotten one there.
And you have.
I thought they were already. Because normally, if you get one, you get the other, right?
Actually, the previous, um, was using it for irrigation.
Oh, it's irrigated water, and he asked, okay, I got you, never would.
Irrigation only, and then he sold it.
Right, he was irrigated property first, it was just water. Ms. Sarah, explain that to me. I'm not.
I'm going to approve the pet permit.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Dr. Fontenot has made the motion to approve the permit, and Mr. Bean has seconded, do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's probably the easiest thing you're gonna do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Welcome home.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
We'll talk about that rail later.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hurry, hurry for the train.
Wait, you should be there for a train here just any second.
So we can ask a short, I'm trying to read, I don't get any questions.
No.
Definitely, all I have is the report, so I'm just saying, I don't get any questions.
Well, we'll check that, thank you for being here.
No, yeah, no, 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 no.
I, I'm sorry. I'm sick, I haven't input, I don't.
Hey, the other law enforcement agencies is at our neighbors to the west of us, pockets that you're assisting with all of them? All the way around? All the way around, and you, so you're not gonna disclose that with those guys? We, that has picked up. Never mind. I'll put it that way, but, uh, we, we assisted them by.
Assisted last night?
Yep.
Okay, well, that was painless.
Good thing we didn't call them.
That's the way to do it.
Okay, Mr. Ware, let's see how much it gives me a painless here.
Okay, July twenty-four, twenty-five, water report. We had five water leak, water leaks. Uh, turn-ons were ten, shut-offs were ten, the shut-off lists were ten, they're all tens as well. Meter readings, seven hundred and thirty-six, uh, lift station checks, twenty-one, well checks, thirty-one, water tower checks, thirty-one, wastewater samples, four, uh, plant problems, just one, lift station problems, we had three. Uh, we've sold two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars worth of, uh, extra water to, uh, a couple of road crews aboard. Uh, chlorine checks were a hundred and fifty-five, no trees, which was good. Sewer calls were two, water samples, two, flush lines, fifteen, and service calls were five. Uh, we did receive our dump trailer, uh, last week, and we've, uh, used it once and it works really, really well, so. It's gonna be a handy, handy thing to use. Uh, we're still looking into the mini excavators, I've driven three, uh, different brands, they're all almost exactly the same, exactly built the same, but their pricing is quite a bit different. Uh, the, uh, the last one that, uh, uh, we drove, we, uh, Asco out of Tyler just came by today and gave us a price for a Hitachi, which is, uh, uh, from all that we have looked into, is a really, really good brand. And they offer very good financing, zero percent financing for sixty months of, uh, we're getting very close to finding a machine, I think.
Cause that one price off fairly a little.
Uh, very close, it's, uh, very close to the black cat, within a thousand dollars of the black cat, so it's one of the cheaper, cheaper.
We do, do a ten percent down payment, but we thought we could highlight it for them.
So.
Oh, yeah, we only have to pay for one month instead of all one time, that helps out.
Yeah, uh, anyway, we're still, still working on it.
Don't let that, don't let that last one make a decision.
Okay, let's next on, um, the pews at the city center. We had a discussion on this the other day, and I went back and checked, and it said that we voted to declare them surplus to be sold, there was no dollar amount put on them. Now, I talked to a lady, um, Saturday, who has a friend who does estate sales and antiques and antiques and whatever, and she gave her a little bit of the information that we had, ours are not solid, they are veneer, second brick, they're, a couple of them looks like somebody chewed on them, but, um, they're, they're in decent shape. And the lady told her, says, we're having trouble giving them away. So my, what, the reason I bring this back is I would just like the council to allow me to go out there and say, you know, we have these pews, my brother and I went out and we measured each one of them, they are the strangest links, and I mean, just all over and where.
How about you, like, give me a hundred dollars for the small one, that's over the rest of my life.
We've got, we've got one that has already been sold, um, that is, we picked up.
It's sold, they're sold.
It's sold, you just have to kind of get up and bring them in.
I mean, we're done, we give you a hundred dollars for all, and I'll take the one and you give.
And you'll take those, okay. Uh, but just some way to get rid of them.
Yeah.
We would like to go out and take up one pew uh, and see exactly how, how, how it's attached, um, and what kind of a pain. And the pew at the very back where the sound equipment is, I'd like to take that one, because it, it's real tight back there.
So they're gonna be taken out with, there's a nut on it, when you lift it up, and then you, there's one, two ways to remove that, that, that.
Anchor from the concrete.
Either you gotta cut it off, or something, it depends on, but it's probably the old church, that's probably the way you gotta do it. The newer ones, you can hit on it, hard enough with a hammer to lift it up, it'll, it'll de-set it, and you should be able to pull it out.
I, I, I have a request.
You're taking up all the pews.
That you and my baby brother, because he, he seems to have some ideas, I'm sure that you heard. Uh, y'all go out there and take up one pew, that pew to the back.
I'll get with Ricky to do that.
Calling, y'all have.
I don't know which one of us is gonna lift it, but yeah, we'll figure it out.
Well, we'll figure it out.
We'll do it.
Well, I scooted a couple of them already, they weren't attached to the far end.
Yes.
Yeah, a couple of them were only attached to one end, not on the other, so you can scoot it back and forth where it's, it's already.
That is bizarre.
Yeah. Well, can, can I, can we make a motion that, instead of, can we amend what was said before?
Yes, that's why we're here.
We're about to do that.
Why don't I make the motion to amend what was said before about selling them, and let's dispose of them?
Thank you.
Well, just re- we clarify with amend the motion.
Amend.
To include.
You can do the motion, I'll second. Oh.
Hang on.
To include, um, hang on, hang on, I'm in.
Trying to stop, I'm trying.
Uh, to dispose of the surplus property with or without, to authorize City Hall, or Mayor's office, whoever, to dispose of the surplus, to declare them surplus property, they may be disposed of with or without remuneration. I mean, you get the money.
I'll second that motion.
All right, hang on just a second, yes, ma'am.
I, I have a question, would there be any country churches that might be looking to update their pews?
I don't know, we've got, we'll put it out on Facebook or whatever, you're the.
But Bernice, after this meeting, he would certainly ask around. Just get back to us.
You're gonna work on it, you're gonna get it.
I, I don't want to go, I'll take that one in the middle, take it up for me and leave.
Yeah, I think we want them to take.
Everything up and out.
Yeah, we don't want you to take one or two, we want you to take a number of.
We're not doing the memory.
No, we're, we're not.
And we, we're trying to do this quickly.
Yeah, we're not gonna do anything until after on our hero.
Yeah.
That's September the seventh, so, but in the meantime, if y'all will take that one up, see what's there.
I'll come get the one, I'll give you the money for the one I told you I'd buy.
Okay.
And then I'll, then I'll get with Ricky and we'll take care of it.
So I have your amended motion as to declare the pews as surplus property with or without renewing, and to be disposed of with or without remuneration.
That'll work, thank you.
And the second, my.
I, I second it. I gave it my first.
And we're still discussing, so, but then, I think even once we get them up, and if we have to wait a little bit to rip the carpet up and see what's under, you know, we can do the edge and see what's under there, but we need to just get this done. And a lot of it is gonna be sweat.
Hey, just so anybody knows, that these things can be shortened.
Oh, yeah.
You can take a long one, and you can chop it, and then move the end piece over, so it's not, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have the talent.
And they're, they're really nifty, I've got one in my office, and folks just love it.
Oh, really?
What are you doing?
She's, she's no caution, I don't know. Why don't, why don't we and Ricky try to do this before the next meeting, the next meeting, we can tell.
I mean, you let me know and I'll let you.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to Ricky this morning.
One idea we had as well were, uh, was to let Jane Keenan know, if no, if we don't have any response locally, that he may know people, the Republicans that might be, if they're free.
Yeah, they're free.
Ideally, ideally, if we get one of them up, and we figure out how to get them up, we put those guys to get it, that, make them get them up, and we'll just clean up the, the nut table.
Yeah, they're going to have to take them with, we do, not deliver anything.
Yeah, so let's, let's go find out how we get them out, and then based on that, we can, we can start advertising how we're gonna get rid of them.
Good deal.
I would suggest that you also talk to the clerk, because they took some of the much from our church.
And that's what I wanted mainly this far, to see if our board, okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any more discussion?
No, quit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you much, we'll start working on that. All right, let's see what we have next. Letter of engagement on the twenty-twenty-five audit, Ms. Rex.
So, um, when Mr. Ward was here last month, he was saying he was going to reengage the city to do our audit for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five years. Um, he does have to complete it within a hundred and eighty days, so if he completed it later than March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, and he has offered us the same price that we charged them the last three years, which is twelve thousand dollars for the audit.
Did that be put in the budget?
I, you know, it is really hard to find a good auditor, and, um, you know, we have another good, good legislature, what can they do? Except to, but he has offered us.
Well, let me amend your statement, say, good luck finding one that will actually do one for a small town.
Yeah.
The price will do, because we have to go to Dallas to hire big firms. You can't find anybody with it.
The audit is, we retain with the board, Mike Ward, you can engage him, so, so.
You would need a motion to, do what?
Ten days, yes.
I'll make the motion to engage, um, Mike Ward.
Mike Ward.
Mike Ward. For the purposes of the next upcoming audit.
We have a motion by Mr. Bean, second, and Mr. Rosell, to continue our relationship with Mr. Ward. And some. Are you gonna ring the dubs in the morning?
No, just twelve.
Okay, just twelve, all right. Um, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you much. Okay, what is this financials, not the budget?
What?
It's you, whatever.
It's financials. It's just a financial report, it's for July twenty-twenty-five. And, um, in your package, you've got a budget report that just shows you where we're at on income and expenditures for each of our, um, private categories, but, um, I don't know if you guys have any questions, there are a few of our categories primarily utilities are a little bit higher this month. In some cases, we had two bills, because it was a thirty-one day month, so we had one beginning and one at the end. And then other cases, all of our utility bills run up because of our conditioning system running. Um, nothing else really to note, I did want to confirm that, um, Jeff did apply for a grant for fire department to pay for the workers' comp. to pay for the workers' compensation policy. He just didn't purchase through T M L for the remaining or this fiscal year. And they did pay that out really quick. The funding ended on July 30th, so he just barely got it in there. But he did and we got the money back for that. Um, other than that, um, did you guys have any questions? We've had a few mentions of bathroom expenses. We talked to you a little bit about what those were and so some of those came this last month.
Any questions?
Is July, or the last year, the net loss? I think July's always kind of the longer month for certain expenses that get done, huh?
Yes.
So nothing unusual?
No, unfortunately, we're gonna face a loss August, September, October, probably November because we, you know, property tax rate, we have a budgeting and they probably need to pay the apartment taxes. So that's why we're going. But we have a, for general fund, those months, two people.
Have we gotten a stat that says what, how, how paid up we are on our property tax rate? Have we collected like 70%? Do they give you that stat?
Um, we do. I don't have it with me, Trey, but I'll send it to you guys that now it's.
What do you think we're at, 80, 85?
No, I believe we're over 90.
Well, that's good.
But I'll, I'll send you the report. I, I've had a lot of numbers in the last six weeks. So I don't want to tell you wrong that I do not have that report with me, but I can get a net now. I think we're at 90% questions or, okay. They've done really well. Any other questions?
Okay, I didn't see any. Look at the minutes.
What if in style, you want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion that we accept the financials again. July 11th.
I'll second that motion.
Minutes for all the minutes?
No, no.
No?
We're approved the financials.
Nothing else, yeah.
We have a motion here, thank you for approving the financials.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we're going to minutes.
The only addition I have for the minutes is I apologize, our most recent meeting on the 13th, I didn't write down who gave the pledge, but it was Mr. Trey Lee. So that will be filled in on the minutes for the 13th because I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
Was it August 12th? It was August, yeah, this is August 12th. Whatever, whatever date it is.
I bet it was the 13th.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Texas week.
Well, we better not approve those. I'll put that on next month's agenda. I'm so sorry. It was incomplete anyway, so I'll brief it down on next month. I apologize.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Uh, everything about August.
Except August 12th, it was not that.
Yes.
Actually, Mr. Shaly, with the exception of August 12th, it's not August.
I'll second.
You have a second from Ms. Allen? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you much.
Thank you. Um, this next one is a housekeeping item. We pay the Upsher County Accessive Collection, uh, about $1,000 each year to purchase the software that issues for all the taxing entities in Upsher County. And we just officially have to, after a resolution, designate her as the one that we trust to calculate our rate accurately.
I move to approve the resolution on the point in Upsher County Tax Assessor. How to calculate the revenue of voter approval rate that required by Texas Tax Code 2694.
Second. We have a motion by Dr. Botno, a second by Ms. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Uh, next one, again, this is a recurring contract that we have with East Texas Council of Governments. We provide 911 addresses for us in the city limits. Uh, they have most of Upsher County. They do Upsher County, um, outside of the corporate areas. But, um, you know, everything's in there in your package and I would recommend that we definitely go with them. They, if somebody needs a 911 address, they make application at C O G and then they submit this information to them.
Kill four.
Yeah, East Texas.
How much is it?
Nothing.
Uh, no, I've, I've worked with council government for it and they give millions of dollars for. I move to approve. Does the council approve resolution from an older database maintenance contract to the Texas government for October 30, 25, except for 30, 24, 6? Second.
Okay, a motion by Dr. Botno and a second by Mr. Shaly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you guys, you did a great job.
Any opposed? They are fast.
Okay, next one, um, I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at this. Of course, we have two, five board members of the appraisal district sitting in our midst. But apparently, everybody's up for an appointment. Um, so according to this, it says each taxing entity may nominate one candidate for each of the five positions on the Upsher County Appraisal District Board of Directors. They serve a two-year term beginning January 1st of 2025. And, uh, it, there's quite a few qualifications. I don't know if you guys have a chance to read through them. So what it is, is that we have until October 14th to submit a resolution nominating up to five candidates. So we do not have to take action on this this month if you want to think about it. We would be able to do it on September 16th and submit that resolution. So what's your pleasure, council? Do we want to nominate? And, um, do you know who you want to nominate? Because we can go ahead and do that tonight or we can take a month if you guys want to.
So are the, my question, I guess, would be, are there spots coming open or, or do we know whose spots are open?
I don't think, well, Trey replaced, Trey and I both serve on appraisal district board. I'm the chairman and we just, uh, seared him in, yeah, last, last month. Uh, I don't know, I wasn't provided the date for the term of service. I thought it was two years.
Well, she says in this memo that everybody's up.
Everybody's up, okay.
But I, is there more to that, Dr. Botno?
No, there's five.
Are you guys interested in being reappointed?
Continue doing it.
I continue doing it.
Trey's been there like.
I'll say we at least submit those two.
Yeah, I was under the understanding that it was, that it was.
And you're just like someone else's.
Yeah, I, I took over Brandon's, but I, I was under the understanding that it was to go a little longer.
You think this is a mistake?
Can you contact her and then we can still take care of this September?
Sure, yeah.
Why don't you do that?
Okay.
Carol, the chairman couldn't explain that to you. Explain to her the chairman of the board.
Yeah, yeah, he didn't know his term was up.
Yeah.
He just, David, David just got started in that position. We really wouldn't want to take it away from him.
Well, he was replaced with Brandon, so his might have been, that might have been expiring, Trey, so.
Yeah, it could have been.
But with, you know, just for.
I give a motion to table this until September.
I make a motion to table this until September.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Shaly has made a motion to table this until September. And Mr. Bean has seconded. Any more discussion? With, Ms. Rex is going to clarify. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good deal.
Okay. Number 15, I want to take a little bit more time on it, it's up to you guys. But, um, did y'all get my email about? Yes, a separate email that, uh, Malana Howard got in touch with me on Friday and said that if we wanted to, we could potentially raise our property taxes even higher. I already gave you hers, did you read this segment?
Yes, my mom.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at our last budget meeting, we talked about taxing at 44.4 cents per $100 valuation. And that was, um, in between our revenue tax rate and our voter approval rate. And I think we all felt comfortable with where that was gonna put us for our revenue side. Um, what Malana discovered on Friday, I believe, because of the situation on city of Gilmore, is that there is something that small cities wish, to be a small city, we can allow by the under 30,000 population and collect under $500,000 in revenue, which we do qualify. But there is a rate that you can adopt that is called the de minimis, de minimis rate that, um, raises your voter approval tax rate. So if the council, um, so what we're doing tonight is we have to do a roll call vote and we have to, in that roll call vote, determine what we want our proposed tax rate is. And based on that proposed tax rate, we have put notice on our website. We have to publish notice in our official newspaper. And then we have a tax hearing, which we tentatively set that date as September 2nd, 2025. Once you vote and we get to that hearing, we cannot change the tax rate we plan to adopt unless we start all over. So we just want to make sure that we propose the tax rate you guys want to nominate. And according to Malana, any of the three proposed tax rates in the light green near the bottom of the first page on here, we would be eligible that we could adopt any of those three tax rates.
Without voting?
Without voter approval.
Didn't we vote to have take something in November? Isn't that, no, we talked that we'd have to go to November if we tried to go higher.
Are you talking about street payments?
That's what we have in November.
Oh, that's, I, 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 yeah, yeah, I got it. No problem.
Okay.
So any of the three in the green, we won't have to ever vote a different.
So we can stick with 44.4 if you guys want to. But Malana is telling us, and everything that you see attached to this is the backup documentation that she provided to me that allows us to do that and explains the de minimis, de minimis tax rate. So I, I don't know what you guys are gonna do. I, she apologized for the late, she just learned of this herself Friday afternoon and she got me more information yesterday to supply and start putting it to you guys, so.
And I'm, 46, 46.
We can go up 36.
It's not as.
From last year. If we went, so last year we taxed at .43.
Yes.
And if we went with the .46, we'd be at two and a half percent. So we can't go 36.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah. We could go. It's, it's not. I mean, I, we never know. I mean, I know, I feel like everybody's being squeezed. Like, I'm personally being squeezed at the supermarket and everywhere I go, you know?
We, we still don't have any idea where the school board went.
I don't, George. I, I'm not, and I don't even know like.
Do you know what the indications are or you don't know? You get, oh, you get down, hey, so let's go see.
Hi, uh, Laura, is there a difference? Did you change that?
Yes, yes. I can do it. I'm so sorry, Rex, I found your title on one night in here.
Um, and we got, somebody, I think when we were discussing it in the office the other days, well, what if we wait until next year? We don't know what our legislature is gonna do from one month to the next or one day to the next. So they could just completely do away with everything.
Well, the commissioner told us today, one of the commissioners, two of the commissioners, did our board give today?
Do.
Yeah, that's nice. They're, they're raising their, the county, the county rate they're going at, they're raising their rate.
To plan for then, there's gonna be recesses at some point.
Yeah, they're having to.
We have to do.
Yeah.
Well, what's interesting is that if you look at it from what we initially thought, if we even average to like .463, which would be exactly two and a half cents per $100 valuation, the difference in revenue is only $10,000 for the city. And I don't mean only, but I'm just saying it's not.
It's not huge, no.
But it's helpful, it's, it's not huge, but it's helpful. So it's totally, you know, and I don't know, I didn't know what you guys would want to do when Malana contacted me and like, well, I'll just give them, wait, you provided, you didn't, and you guys.
And we have a compare apples and apples around here. We have a very low tax rate. I've Googled our neighbors to the west. And theirs has been running historically .97 cents.
Yeah, but it's not, the thing about it is it's not just our tax rate. It's the, our consist, our constituents get our tax rate plus for the school district's tax rate.
Well, everybody does.
Exactly. So if we only went up two cents and the school district only went up two cents, it would be a non-communicated decision here, right? But if we're gonna go up two cents and then the school district is gonna go up four cents hypothetically, it's, that's a bigger nut altogether. So you see them saying without us knowing, we, each other's gonna do. I'm not quibbling about the dollars here, the overall dollars. But all of a sudden, it, and we know the school tax is a lot higher tax than our tax.
Yes.
Okay, that's where the problem lies. It doesn't lie in, in, in the, in the property tax side. It lies in the school district side. And it's the school district side that basically 50% of its population no longer has kids in the school district and they're paying a higher rate.
We still pay.
Yeah, exactly.
But ours is.
So all's I'm saying is, is that the school probably needs the money more than we need the money and you need to try to average it out somehow or another without a kid. Well, I'm just saying that it's a lot of money.
We gotta run ours like a business.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, but you see where I'm going in. I mean, if you only got five cents to give hypothetically, what are you giving to?
Well, the reason we operate on such type of budgets is for years, they never raised anything. And now we're behind.
Well, and even if we raised, then they pushed us back down again, but.
I know, but to push down is not as hard as it.
No. I think to be the guy that always.
And probably of the three, the school tax and the county, you're probably the smallest.
Well, and I understand that, but I mean, it's still.
And I know where you're going.
A lot of retired people, I mean, fif, over, probably 60% of our population here is retired people. And they're living off of a fixed annual.
Yes.
So every year of their tax goes up, I mean, it's a little, they, social security's not going up hypothetically.
No.
So I just, instead of maybe going to the top, maybe we find somewhere in the middle so we leave a little bit of room. That's my suggestion.
I support 46 even still.
Yes.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
What's your pleasure?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we go to .46.
I'll second.
We have a motion.
No, we have to, you have to call.
We have to have a roll call.
Yeah, you have to call each member, each running.
We have a roll or?
Ms. Allen.
Wait, who's the second?
Oh.
Okay, I just want to make sure, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Go.
And I do everything hypothetically. Ms. Allen. Uh, we are voting.
Yeah, you're.
Of course.
On the rate of .46.
Yes, it's in the midst. Yea, yure nae.
Yea.
Mr. Bean.
Yippee.
Dr. Fontenot.
Yea.
Mr. Rozell. Mr. Shaly. We are unanimous.
Okay. Now, part two of that, um, we.
Long as it's awesome.
We currently have tentatively set September 2nd as our public hearing. We, we have not set a time. We, we've done as early as 5:30 for our public hearing since it's generally a little abbreviated.
5:30 in the morning?
AM.
Sure.
PM.
I've been, for some reason, wrote down 6:00.
But it can be whatever time you guys want. But I have the published notice printed on the website tomorrow, so.
To be fair, to be fair today, everybody, we can give them time to get. To be fair, to be fair to everybody, we can give them time to get.
What time do they get off work?
From Tyler to Longview to here, so let's say six.
Well, if they get off work at four, let's do it at three thirty.
I'll make the motion that we do it at six o'clock, September the seventh.
We have a motion from Mr. Rozell that can help a public hearing on the tax rate. A tax rate hearing on September the second, it's a Tuesday, it's beginning six PM.
Here, here.
And the hearings now.
I'll say, we will be our second.
Is that, is that on? Okay. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, the next one, we just wanted to give you guys an update. So next month, we will have an ordinance prepared that will include, um, you know, we have been adopted ordinance that allows us to charge the users their credit card processing fees when they use a credit or debit card. And so we're working on that. It, it is going to be a big change for our community for twenty-five years. Uh, we have paid the processing fees for credit cards and debit card users. And they've been able to call in and pay over the phone and unfortunately, but with, now they're being a fee associated with it, they're not going to be able to call and pay over the phone. And it's probably about, I would say, I'd be looking at the numbers, it's, you know, close to three hundred people are going to be calling on the phone.
So can I ask a question? Are they calling on the phone because they all work out of town, they can't make it here to make the payment? They don't apply forever stamp?
Well.
Or can our, can our app?
So can we, can we get a drop box on the building where they can drop their payment?
We have a drop box, we can always send a call.
I didn't know that.
So this.
Oh, yeah, on the phone and in person.
This fee would be like, mine's automatic, mine's auto draft. So I would have that fee?
You will, but we are changing to ACH draft on our auto pay system.
So from your bank account and then it wouldn't be?
There's no fees associated right now, they've not said that will last forever, but for right now, there's no fees associated with ACH.
It's, it's like, the government wants to get rid of, rid of cash and checks and charge us to make us use what they want us to use.
Yeah.
And it is a big change, a lot of our renters for the city center and the community center pay with cards. You know, now they'll have to pay if they want to pay with cards. We know that there will be the addition, some additional equipment we're going to have to buy because we have seen uptick in check processing. And we, we want to buy a machine that we can tell whether or not they actually have money in the bank when they hand us a check.
Is that where they, if somebody pays by check, I don't know how many you have, but you put it in a little machine. It'll automatically debit their account. Last thing, the ACH, they will check back.
Well, this is if you want to walk in the door and hand us a check, then we can verify whether you have the funds in your account.
Machine, you just push it through.
Now, and I, I think I've probably asked you this a thousand times, but is this just for people who might at First National, but the ACH that you're doing?
Any institution.
Any institution. And they've been working, I know Ms. Sarah's been working very hard on this and, um, so.
Anyway, we just wanted to give you an update.
Good job.
We spent, there's more that we'll have to do next month to get it going, but, um, anyway.
It's going to be a shock for our customers, whether water or, uh, civic center, any, any of the rentals and everything. But we are spending, we are losing a great deal of basically taxpayer money. So someone can be convinced. So.
I mean, you go down to get your.
The doughnut shop.
Yeah, you go down to get your DMV plates done and they don't, they can check, they're going to take only check from your cash and they're not paying them credit.
The place doesn't.
Yeah, so.
But I mean, there's, we need to, we need money.
It just, you know, we foresee that some customers are going to have a hard time with it, but, you know, we know you guys. We know you guys, well.
It's like three seventy-five.
It's probably going to be seventy-five cents or about, about a dollar convenience fee and then it's a percentage. And right now, that ranges between two point three and two point five percent. So it just depends.
It's about three seventy-five per, per hundred dollars.
What's the price of convenience if you don't want to drive downtown? You know, a lot of people still, one of the things we have, you can still walk in and talk to a human being.
Yeah.
Some way.
And we even answer the phone, I like that.
We, they can, you know, they can find out their balance in, at any time, twenty-four hours a day.
Actually, in Corona, where we were at, we actually have like an old mailbox and you just throw, on your way to work, you just throw it through, drop it in, off you went, you can even get on your art.
And you see it got a nice light over it if you do it after, after the art.
You're done, off you go.
Okay, good job ladies, thank you.
Um, let's see, if I have a report sheet early. Um, as far as stuff on other, okay. Um, several of you elected officials still need to do your cybersecurity test by August thirty-first, so.
I can tip them, I think.
We're procrastinating.
Trust me, it's the, it's the public information.
Well, you can come to City Hall if you need to, or you watch.
Would you just send me the link to my text message, can you text it to me?
Oh, yeah.
Can you, can you watch it on your phone?
Yes.
Oh, send it to.
Now, there's a test you have to take, but if you come to City Hall, we have the test printed and Mr. is happy to grade it for you.
But there's also this.
That you're supposed to get.
You're welcome to get a certificate. That break down.
That's the.
But it's terrible if it twists while she's in recognition.
Yeah, while you're sending him, go ahead and send him a magnific.
Yeah, it seems to me too late.
Okay, yes, I can do that, I text it instead of.
You can't tell the professionals in here, can you? I'm just busy, okay, I'm just busy.
Chase, probably they didn't, but.
My city requires us to do it.
Yeah.
So I've got.
He's still employed.
I feel like just, I feel like just.
Wow.
You're a little bit of a job.
Anyway, um, so again, you guys, that's really, I'm not a whole lot like Ms. Braggett said. We are a little light on activities in September, City Hall will be closed September first for Labor Day weekend. So, uh, we will be closed that weekend, um. I've lost my little sheet, I had a few other things I was going to tell you about, let me see if I can find it in here really quick. Oh, here we go, all right. Um, yeah, I talked about that, okay. The pub, the tax rate hearing is going to be on September second, then our budget hearing will be on September sixteenth at the start of the council meeting. And then we anticipate that on September sixteenth, we'll be, um, adopting our budget, our tax rate, and then we gratify our tax increase. So we'll have three things that we'll need to do in the month of September. Malana's deadline is the fifteenth, but she's graciously extended us to the sixteenth, which is a Tuesday. I know Sally's not going to be here, but, but we should have a forum, whether it be with me else. Um, and the only other thing I had was that, um, I'm hoping that a few of you guys that are council members can take some time to go and talk to Rorrie, Chamber, and the senior grade about street maintenance tax. So that will be, of course, election day is going to be coming up, the first week of November, the first Tuesday of November. But we're hoping that we can get some of you as elected officials to actually come to some of those things and make some contributions. No, I don't recommend that. That might be against the law. In October, I'm hoping that some of you can meet with Chamber, Rorrie, and the senior stream to talk about the benefits of street maintenance tax, because that'll be on the ballot.
I'm sure one of us, I'm sure one of us could talk to the Rory Club this sun, this Saturday morning.
Maybe one of us could talk to the Lions Club.
Everybody lives in Cityland, and you, honey. Oh, Carrie. Yeah, Lippy, yeah.
And you, you live in Cityland?
Sorry.
We're planning to do that in the month of October so that then the elections.
Last night it seemed like the senior meeting was going to be pretty, pretty jam packed, we might not get a word in ed twice over the next month, so I don't know what to worry about that.
Do you need to ask for a special meeting?
We're at the, we're at the.
All we need is, we need talking points so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we should probably get that, you can get that out.
And we have an interesting little thing to do there.
And if you make sure I have a copy of it on Saturday morning.
Okay, I don't know, I'll have it ready by Saturday, but I'll try it.
Well, you can just give me flashcards when you get to the meeting.
Okay. Um, and then the only other update I have is that I talked to Phil Stegall and he's still planning to come and work on that road. But he doesn't have a date right now, but he's supposed to be getting with us in the next couple of weeks to let us know when they're going to do that work down there. That's all I have to say.
Um, a few things, we have, um, football started, I'm happy about that. We also have, uh, the train folks that come here, the Northeast Texas train enthusiasts, they will be here on the fifth and sixth of September. And they are basically making it a slumber party this time, they're going to be here twenty-four hours, be open. And so if you wake up in the middle of the night and don't have anything else to do, wander down here and talk to Skip and the guys. Um, we also have coming up at the end of September is our citywide cleanup on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, and that's good. Um, we are starting to work on a group.
Uh, for some reason, I thought it was thirteenth and the fourteenth.
Okay.
I can't pull up Facebook.
Before I make the September calendar.
What do you, what do you want, what do you want to know?
Citywide cleanup, I think it's on the website.
I don't know why I have twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Is it on, is it on, it's on Facebook?
Yes.
I mean, it's like worth the same.
It's under community calendar.
Well, why y'all do that, what was I going to say? Oh, uh, next year, we will, our, our little bird here has incorporated, we will be one hundred years old. Yes, older than me.
I didn't say.
Not yet. Um, and we're putting together a group, because, I mean, this is a big thing. And, and we want to have a celebration. So if you want to help, yell at me and we're going to put together a group. Also, the United States of America will be two hundred and fifty years old next year. So we want to celebrate.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, all cleanup days.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. How'd you make that work so fast, Luby?
He's, he's our ticket.
Thank you for letting me check that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but that's okay. Uh, anyway, we've got a lot of things going on, um, but one big thing coming up is to honor our heroes. We would like for everybody, all of council to be there if you can to honor our people. Um, we're getting into the fall, hopefully. And that's, I can't think of anything else right now, I'm sure I will once I leave, but do appreciate everything you do. Thank you much. Does anybody want to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, Ms. Allen, Dr. Fontenot, all in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Let's go home, whoa, look at that, under an hour.
They always leave them there.
Did you get it?
They always, don't they always leave them?
Yeah, they always do.
Yeah.